All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings will broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Rigdon?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Shane Ellison to leave the implication. Please stand and remain seated in the pleasurable leadings.
Let us pray. Father, today we just give thanks for the beautiful sunshine that you've given us for another day, for the opportunity to serve this city, this state, this country, and to serve you, Father. We give thanks specifically for our men in uniform, for our emergency responders, and just for all of those that serve our city. We ask now for your blessings upon this council. Please continue to give the council and the mayor wisdom in all the decisions that they make, and just please continue to show your grace on us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on May 2nd.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 28th through May 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations. Okay. We do have a special presentation. Commander David LaPointe.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dave LaPointe. I'm the Post Commander of VFW Post 8600 here in Gaston. I'm also the District 2 Commander from the Department of Alabama. We're here today to honor one of Gaston's police officers. We call it a gold medal awards program. The VFW calls it the J. Edgar Hoover Award. This award is to an individual for outstanding service in the field of law enforcement and their recognized contributions to the preservation, the ideas of law and justice, recognition by their colleagues, unswavering loyalty and active performance in the defense and security of the nation, dedicated to the responsibility and role in their responsibilities. We tell you a little story. It's been about twenty-some years since we've had a recognized police officer for our department. So I talked to one of the old boys and he says, "We've never had any luck anyplace in the city of Gaston." One morning, I got up, I dressed up, and I took a road trip all around Gaston, Southside, you name it, out there. My last stop was here, the city of Gaston. I got to Sergeant Hallman. About a week later, I had a nominee. Whoa, this is great. So anyway, if you shake the bushes long enough and hard enough, something will come up and you'll get along and get something to go with. This individual that we're honoring today has completed 22 years with the Gaston Police Department. He's currently assigned to the Etowah Drug Enforcement Unit and currently as a narcotics agent. He also serves on Special Operations Group and Squad that covers all of Etowah County, high-risk police-involved cause, and has shown exceptional leadership on all missions that he undertakes. He's one of the operators that all the young guys look up to, sort of like me, the guy that trained me. But I look up to him because of his knowledge, his professionalism, his skills, and his dedication to duty. He also serves as a force instructor, must be who's training out on a chief, and firearms instructor for the Gaston Police Department. His knowledge and skills serve the department well in training new recruits as well as more experienced officers. He also serves in U.S. Army Alabama National Guard. He has earned the rank of Staff Sergeant and trains young Army soldiers at the Military Police School by teaching them the necessary tactics to ensure their safety and that the mission is successful. He has taken one year of his life, was deployed to Iraq during Operation Iraqi Freedom. His knowledge and dedication to duty has set the bar high for other officers at the Gaston Police Department to attain. Never tries to draw attention to himself. He just simply says that the team or the unit has met the objective. At this time, I'd like to call Brandon T. up for a job well done professionally and correctly. Brandon T. Law Enforcement Award presented to Brandon T. in grateful recognition of unyielding adherence to the highest ideas of law enforcement and maintaining, preserving, and protecting lawful rights of all citizens. By the veterans of foreign wars of United States, VFW Post 8600, 2017. And here's a certificate of appreciation in grateful recognition of unyielding adherence to the highest ideas of law enforcement, maintaining, preserving, and protecting laws and rights of all citizens. This is from VFW Post 8600. This one says the same thing. I'm not going to read that. This is from District 2, Department of Alabama, Law Enforcement Officer of the Year.
Speak.
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 You speak.
On behalf of the first responders and the soldiers and sailors, airmen, marines, and Coast Guard on this great country we have, I do thank you all. Thanks.
You definitely want to commend Officer Teague for a job well done and thank the VFW for recognizing him, for sure. This is indeed memorable. of nuisance at 1317 Eastview Avenue in District 1, Jazz Investments LLC being the last known owner. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on April 11th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to receive the, to adopt to receive the tabling.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to table. When we have a second, clerk?
Is there a timeframe on the table?
Thirty, thirty days.
Thirty days, okay. Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item number 9B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance at 2323 Forest Avenue in District 6, Michael J. Head being the last known owner. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on April 11th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Ask for 30-day extension, please.
Aye.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item number 9C is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance at 2325 Forest Avenue in District 6, Michael J. Head being the last known owner. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on April 11th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Ask for extension of 30 days, please.
Aye.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolitions that have already been performed, and we have four locations. The locations are 1215 Stillman Avenue in District 2, the amount's $2,001.6640; 611 North 8th Street in District 3, the amount's $3,016.40; 439 North 11th Street in District 3, the amount's $2,076.40; 1007 Holly Street in District 5, $2,641.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four resolutions.
Items number 14 and 15 are resolutions rejecting bids number 3340 and 3341 for storm shelters in east and west Gaston. Due to errors and omissions discovered in the bid package submitted, the engineer was recommend, has recommended rejecting the bid proposals. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt both resolutions.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
Item number 16 is a resolution accepting a donation from the Lambda Eta Omega Chapter of AKA. This is the third year the sorority has participated in the AKA 1908 Playground Project to restore, refresh, and renew 1,908 playgrounds around the world. This year, they are partnering with the city to provide two metal benches at Cusa River Wall and are donating $1,600 towards the project. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? I think, again, this is exemplary and it's a great organization, so we appreciate the continued support. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 17 is a resolution approving taxi cab permit for Love's Taxi Service. Tayla Christina Latrice Cox, doing business as Love's Taxi Service, has met all of the requirements for a permit to operate in the city. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 18 is an ordinance adopting fiscal year 2017 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Budget totaling $945,735. The amount is estimated based on the prior year's federal allotment. This ordinance was presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Can we not suspend the rules? Ask for motion to suspend the rules so we can bring this up today.
Aye.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent, this being granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, I have one item. It's a request from the Planning Department, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent, this being granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
This is an item where there's a new lease between Hunter Manufacturing of Alabama and really the city of Gaston where they're leasing a building out at the airport, their port. And this, the amount they will pay is $22,469.88 for 19 months.
Okay. All right, and for those that may, to piggyback on Councilwoman Toles' points, for those that may recall previous ordinance, I'm sorry, resolutions relative to a lease agreement, this is in addition to those, so it's not, and it actually replaces those and actually increases the amount of the lease agreement. So this is definitely good for the city. Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards? Heath?
Hello, Heath Williamson, the Director of Engineering. Would like to take a minute to announce the Great American Cleanup the City of Gaston will be hosting. This event will begin next Tuesday, May 23rd, and end on the following Friday, May 26th. This event is run in conjunction with the Keep Etowah Beautiful Organization and is intended to encourage communities across the country to unite and focus on beautifying their neighborhoods by cleaning up all of the trash and debris that's been left behind. Mayor Guyton will kick off this event right after next week's council meeting. We encourage community groups, join together, attend the event. We will have some materials ready for the cleanup that you can pick up at that time. If you can't participate in that kickoff event, if you will call the Engineering Department at 256-549-4520, we'll be happy to assist you with that. Also, once the event is done, if you've collaborated with your neighbors or groups, church groups, whatever that may be, you will call the Engineering Department at that same number. Let us know where your debris is. Hopefully, we can haul it in one location, and we will coordinate that pickup at the end of the event on May 26th. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Heath, and we do appreciate this effort. Heath, this is a continuation of some of the past events, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so please, for those that have participated and supported historically, please come out and support. It's a very good event, very good event. It's one of the ways we maintain and keep our riverfronts clean as well. All right.
Good morning, Chairman, and council members, and Mayor Guyton, and as since yet today. I'm Hugh Stump with the Etowah County Tourism Board, and I'm here to just update you all on a few items. First off, would like to definitely give you all a great hand for all your help in the Moving Wall exhibit that we were able to partner in, bringing that here this weekend. We understand there was over 70,000 visitors and members, people going to see this wall. We just, we just think it was a wonderful thing, and we appreciate all the effort and in-kind services and money you all spent to help do that. We appreciate that very much. Secondly, I'd like to mention our thanks for you all for updating and modernizing your Knocko Falls brochure. We were a pleasure to be a partner to help do that. This has been a great need for a while. I think it's going to really help turn visitors, return new visitors to the park. I'd like to also mention that last week, we had a successful Alabama Bass Trail Tournament on Neely Henry, and Spanish sponsored by the City of Gaston and Tourism, and we had 197 boats, and it was a great day. The park was wonderful, Cusa, the Riverwalk Park, Cusa Landing, you know, you all have done a wonderful job, and the Bass Trail folks and all Anglers really appreciate the efforts you've made to modernize that park and get it, make it really looking good for fishing tournaments and for the folks that want to walk around and just enjoy the river. Along those lines, on May 9th, the Alabama Bass Trail announced that Gaston was selected in Neely Henry Lake for the 2018 Alabama Bass Trail Tournament Series Championships. So it'll be two days of Anglers here fishing on our lake, and we're really proud. That's really a great honor to have, and we appreciate your help and the Parks and Recreation Department in doing that. Also, the Rural Tourism Conference, which is a conference between Alabama, Mississippi, and Tennessee, 100 tourism professionals, Gaston was selected in the top three for that conference with Decatur and Auburn. So on June 2nd, we'll be going to Tuscaloosa and making a presentation on behalf of the City of Gaston to bring that conference. It's 100 professional tourism people from around Alabama, Tennessee, and Mississippi. Lastly, but not least, I'd like to announce Memorial Weekend Boat Parade. I've got a poster here. I don't know where the camera is. This is going to be sponsored by us and by the Neely Henry Lake Association. It's going to start at 1:00 down at Rainbow Landing. So if you, we've already got, assemble at Rainbow Landing at 1:00. We're going to head down to Broton Springs, turn around there, come back up through Southside, Bortles Bend, Minnesota Bend, to Cusa Landing, and we'll disperse there at 4:00. And we've already got about, I think we've got almost 50 entries already. There's no entry fee, but it is, we would like to know if you're going to, if you're going to participate, like to decorate your boat, show the American flag. That's going to be Saturday, May 27th, 1:00. If you need further information, just go to GreaterGaston.com. And I want to thank you all for your efforts on tourism. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Hugh. All right, remarks by the mayor and council. Ben?
Sure. There will be an official announcement about the Vietnam War later this week, probably, but we'd like to shortly just thank everybody who came and especially everybody who worked in this. It's a definite feeling to be there. We drove the carts up and down and talked with people. When they're going down, it's a happy mood going back. It's rather soft, and it's an experience for everybody that is concerned. But we'd like to say that the Gaston et Al Patriots Association was responsible, not totally, but for bringing them all here. And we just again want to thank everybody.
Okay. Councilman Cannon?
Allen, how do you do?
Councilman Billingsley?
I'd like to echo on what Ben said. He almost threw me off the cart riding down the hill there, but other than that, it was a great experience. My wife and I went to the one in Washington, D.C., and to really, you really appreciate this kind of stuff that people do because these people gave their lives for this country, and it's just a good thing to see and do. And the one in D.C. is so majestic and beautiful. Also, we have some signs down on Broad Street in the pedestrian crosswalks, and people are stopping, just stopping, and that's only, you're only supposed to stop at those signs if there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk. Now, people going across the crosswalk sometimes almost get run over by people that don't stop. So be careful that if you see people in the crosswalk, stop for them, but don't stop if they're not there. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Worthy?
Yes, I just want to say thanks to everyone that came out to my community meeting on Thursday. We had about 15 or so people there, so we had a good meeting. And I'd like to also say thank you to everyone that called me, messaged me, and to show support. But it's not about me, it's about the community and our kids out there at Gaston City and throughout the Gaston City school system. So I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate it.
All right. Councilman Eccles?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I wondered when I came in if I'd done anything wrong since I saw all the good-looking part of my district sitting in, sitting there. I don't know what they're here for, but I want to welcome them to the council meeting and come anytime as long as you're not after me.
Was that just some long-distance flirting, Mr. Eccles?
Well, I'm a little old for that, but I guess you never get too old.
There's nothing wrong with your eyesight, that's for sure.
No, nothing wrong with my eyesight.
All right. Councilwoman Toles?
No comment.
Okay. All right. Just a couple of quick things. You know, again, do want to echo the sentiment relative to the wall. I think that's a great event. You know, I see a relative of mine, I got an uncle in the, who served in Vietnam, and you know, we're glad to have him here today for sure. But there are others who gave the ultimate sacrifice when they went on that tour, and I think it was great. Thanks to the Gaston Patriots Association, and I don't want to miss the opportunity. Thanks to this council, when the Patriots Association came to pre-council and asked this council to participate, every council member up here jumped at the opportunity. So we do appreciate that, and I think it's been a great event for Gaston, and that's the kind of things that we want to be associated with our city, for sure. One final thing is I'm very proud today because I have a son, my son Tristan's graduating from Tulane University, so, on this weekend. So I'll be traveling to New Orleans to visit with him. Obviously, Tulane, I jokingly told him when he got his football scholarship to Tulane that, you know, even though you can play football a little bit, a little bit better than your dad, just a little bit, but you know, they don't let dummies in there. And I was very proud of him, and he has, he's graduated with honors from Tulane, and he's going to leave there after graduation and go on to graduate school. So I'm very excited, probably more so excited about the prospect of him taking care of me once he, once he starts making some real money. Do appreciate that, and I'm very excited about that. Due to the Alabama League of Municipalities Conference next week, we will not be able to meet on Tuesday. The Chair, at this time, will entertain a motion to change the time for council meeting to 11:00 a.m. on Wednesday, May 24th.
So moved. Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to change the time of next week's regular meeting, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to change to Wednesday.
So it's just the change in the date. The work session will be held at 10:00 a.m., and then the regular meeting will be at 11:00 a.m. All right, is there anything else before we adjourn? All right, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.